Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for being here tonight. Happy to present the agenda for tonight is that we're going to recap the Urban Planning Town Hall meetings that we've had over the last several weeks, give a high-level overview of the three concepts that have been previously presented, and discussion of steps forward. What are the objectives of this meeting? It would be to determine if there's a desire to move forward with our urban planning approach. The desire could be for any of the elements that could move forward, which include improving the street parking, expanding sidewalks, increasing the quantity of trees and landscaping, improvements to crosswalks, and creation of an open green gathering space. Also, we have some discussion of possible implementation, phasing strategies, and then presentation of some estimates. The feedback that we're requesting tonight is to try to determine if there is a desire to move forward with the urban planning elements in conjunction with the design of the senior center, community center, and the library building. Figure out if there's a desire to incorporate any of the urban design ideas into the design of the project that we're working on, because we're racing towards having supplementary design for those buildings in early October. So getting some indication about whether we're facing buildings inward or towards the street would be helpful in getting us to that spot more effectively. And then it could be that there's a limited desire to create just the space around the buildings that doesn't include the rest of the civic center, too, that is a possibility, because that's the most important element to keeping the design of the building moving forward. So first, just a recap of the Urban Planning Town Hall meetings. We had a citizen survey review that happened in the middle of May. And then there was a town hall meeting on June 18th, where we reviewed the urban concepts that included the Westview Green, the Westview Commons, and the Westview Town Square. There was a city council workshop on June 24th. And then there was a meeting that was canceled because of the hurricane that we're having holding tonight. So first, just a high-level overview of the three concepts. This first one is the Westview Green concept. This is the civic center area here that we're going to be focused on in all three. All three of the ideas have a similar street strategy, from having a complete street approach to Milton and Amherst, having a park-street approach to Auden, having a people-street approach to Rice and University, and having a people-street approach to College. So in particular, this idea, I'm going to talk about the things that are different on these three ideas. So the first one, Westview Green, is placing the new buildings sort of facing this organic space that's created that connects the corner of College and Milton down to Amherst, which has the library potentially on one side and has the community center and senior center the other side. They both could share this organic space. Would have some type of drop-off on both Milton and Amherst that would help feed the space. And then the space across the street, which is where the public works, is currently on Milton would be turned into pedestrian parking. This is a three-dimensional view of that, so you kind of get an idea about, you know, again, the buildings are not likely going to be this kind of shape, but just in terms of location, it gives you an idea about what that could look like. The second concept was called Westview Commons. And I guess before I go to this one, none of these are specific proposals. We're not asking you to endorse any of these specifically. They're just three different ways that you could do this, with the assumption is, once we get some feedback, that there would be a variation, it might be a combination of ideas if you want to decide to do that, or maybe something completely different depending on the end result. So this idea is called Westview Commons. Again, it's focused in the same area of the site. This idea has a community center and senior center that sits on the north side of Amherst that opens onto a commons space. It has the library, two-story library that's located across the street on the Milton. And it has sort of a promenade-type idea that sort of connects the buildings that surround this commons area here. This is a three-dimensional view of it. Again, you see that the library and community center, so the community center, senior center would be one-story, and the library would be a two-story space. And then the third idea is called Westview Town Square. Again, the buildings are located in this particular area. In this idea, Milton Street is cut off and is redirected through this parking zone that connects Milton and Amherst here, which creates a larger public space located in this area that has the senior community center located here and the library located in this kind of general area with the open space sort of embracing the water tank area. Entrance to drop-offs would be on both Milton in this area and Amherst in this zone here. And this is a three-dimensional. You see that the library would be a two-story space, and then the community center senior would be a one-story that would be focused in this area. So just to summarize, we did get a lot of feedback from the community and from council through this whole process. And I tried to summarize some of the comments here just to be able to organize the conversation. There was a lot of general acceptance of the ideas with, there's people that were open to that approach. There were, however, some specific concerns regarding some of the specific elements. There were concerns about shutting down the Milton Street, as you saw in the last idea. There was concerns about how the traffic direction would be on both Milton and Amherst, and I think you said it could go really either way. There was comments about how the protection, safety at the crossing streets would be, and concerns about separating people, bikes, and vehicles in some of the complete-street ideas. There was some concerns expressed about traffic and how these would impose on the surrounding areas, the surrounding streets around the civic center. And then there were some comments about the adjacency of parking to these buildings. So this is just kind of a general flavor of some of the concerns that people had reacting to some of the ideas. But I think there was a vast majority of the comments were positive acceptance of the idea of an urban planning approach. So what the main purpose of really tonight, the new information, is really to start to talk about what are the cost estimates for incorporating these ideas. So it gives you an idea about, those ideas are great, but what does it cost? And so just to make this more understandable, and I'm going to spend some time sort of describing this diagram here and why we did this. But just know that when we talked about the cost, the city has recently bid the East Street Drainage Improvement Project, which had a lot of the kinds of elements that this project would have in terms of sidewalks and street improvements and other things. So we leaned on those pricing that you just got back in February to help inform these estimates or these cost estimates that we're talking about today. So they are using those most recent Westview-specific pricing that you received that sort of incorporated all of the restrictions and other limitations of doing work in Westview in terms of hours, in terms of noise. All of those elements are always baked into pricing. And so we wanted to make sure that we use the same kind of pricing when we're showing you these estimates. So just so you know, that's where these estimate unit costs came from. So let me talk about this diagram and how we sort of organize it. So this is just one of the ideas. You'll see that it was broken up into different colors. And how we organized this was that the red zones, which you see as 2A, B, C, and D, those are all related to the area where the design of the buildings for the library, the senior center, and community center are going to be. They are the most impactful to informing what the design of that building would be if you choose to go down the path of creating a gathering space there. So 2A is the most impactful, because it is right around it. It would really tell us about whether we're facing the buildings inward or we're going to face the buildings to the street, as most of the buildings are in Westview. So we captured an area here of 2A, which is the most impactful to the design of the buildings. And then 2B, which depending on the scheme, has streets or potential of building location. C, which is sort of creating a natural connection back to that zone. And then D is a portion out in College Street. And we broke it into this area, because you may decide, hey, we want to do this. We may only want to commit to area 2A and what that is, and we'll commit to the other areas at some point in the future, based upon what makes sense or what else you might want to do at that point or in the future. So that's the idea. So the areas that are in 2, called, well, John calling Phase 2, A, B, C, and D, are the ones that I feel like are most impactful or the most informative to how we end up designing the buildings that we're currently doing. Phase 3 is the green, so 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D, that those seem most appropriate to be considered, depending on what happens at this corner. And when that happens at that corner, that might be a more logical time to consider those improvements so that they're not building things and then tearing them up with construction. I organized 4, which is in yellow, 4A and 4B here, that sort of naturally go with what might be going on here in the future, so that those projects may make sense to align with the timing of that. And then 5A, B, and C really don't have any affinity, but they could be, you know, associated with any one of the phases or not. So we're really just trying to break it down so that you had some relativity about what the different elements of an urban plan approach might be. So over here, I'm going to go to another page so you can read the numbers, but I just wanted to go back and describe. So how this is laid out, as you'll see, this is Phase 2. That'll be up here with 2A, B, C, and D. You will see that the numbers for the different ideas is the Westview Green, Westview Commons, and Westview Town Square. What are the costs associated, because they are different depending on the different ideas that we showed you. So the costs for those, in some cases, are different, but in some cases are the same. So I broke those down by 2A, 2B, 2C. 2D, Phase 3, same thing, 3A, which is associated with that, 3B, which is associated with that, 3C is associated with that, and 3D is associated with that, and so on for Phase 4 and Phase 5. So then you get that if you chose, wanted to know what the whole idea would be for something like the Westview Green, that you'd come down to the bottom here. So I'm going to flip to the sheet where you can actually read the numbers. So this is the exact same information, it's just blown up larger. Again, these are what I call rough order of magnitude costs. So these are just taking, obviously, we haven't designed anything. We're taking areas, we're trying, we're using unit costs that are associated with those areas to try to give us an idea about what those kind of improvements would look like in terms of cost. We call that ROM, or Rough Order Magnitude Cost. As I mentioned, the unit costs for each of those costs, there is a detailed estimate with each one of these. They're all based upon, and informed by the East Side Street Drainage Improvements Package 2, which the city bid in February of 2024. And then the costs are based upon the assumed sequential phasing that I laid out. So that the timing of each of these is escalated to a different timeframe based upon the facility's master plan timeframe and associated with those different approaches, if that makes sense. And then the phases have been determined, which are based upon the most impactful for the development of the facility's master plan. So just to go into a little bit more detail, again, Phase 2, which is the red area, which is right next to the building. 2A is the area that really connects or potentially could connect the buildings. You see that they're in the range of somewhere between $2.5 million up to just under $4 million. Number, the Town Square is more because it includes that road connecting Milton and Amherst. So it has, obviously, would be more costly than the others. And then 2B ranges from 1.7 million up to 3.4 or 3.5. 2C is the same, because it is the same assumed improvements in all of the different three ideas. 2D is also the same. And then you will notice from Phase 3, 4, and 5, they are all the same, because they have the same assumed improvements, the same sidewalks, the same angle parking, the same trees, the same lighting, the same crosswalks are assumed in all of the, all three of the different ideas, so that the budget estimates for each of those are the same. So if you're looking for how to, if you wanted to adopt a idea that looked like the Town Hall Green for the urban planning, that it's around $21.5 million with the assumption of the timeframes that I included. You see, this is 28, 27, 26, 25. The Town Hall, the Westview Commons is about $20.7 million, and the Town Hall Square is $21.2 million, based upon the unit costs that I had prepared.
Jeff, let me, sorry.
Yes, sir.
You know, ultimately, it seems when I look at these images, and I know these are rough orders of magnitude, but you know, even though by the nature of how you've calculated, the differences in costs among the three have to be driven by Phase 2.
Correct.
But the all-in cost with Phase 2, based on the cost of the building in each of those scenarios, may ultimately equilibrate it, because, you know, you know, it looks like there's only a million dollars or so difference between the cheapest and the most expensive.
Correct.
It sounds like it could be overwhelmed, because I don't have the materials of the building part of it.
For example, yes, if we have a building configuration that makes the buildings' costs more than others, then yes, then the buildings' budget would bear that cost.
Correct. And so in some sense, I guess, you know, while I initially had a lot of questions about, oh, why is 2B, you know, more in the green versus the Town Square? I guess it's sort of irrelevant until we have some sense of how the buildings are phased as part of it.
Correct, because I based it upon the assumptions in these diagrams. So each one is a little bit different. And so just to keep it to where we have it. And again, we're not suggesting pick 8, 1, 2, or 3. These are not specific proposals. These are just three different approaches that if the city chooses to go down a path of urban planning for the streets and/or to have an open gathering space, that you'd have some idea about what kind of investment that would look like. And then hopefully, these diagrams give you an idea about what it could end up being in terms of the quality of the space.
And I mean, I haven't been to City of London, but if we elect to do a building and we don't do some of this, there would still be some baseline costs to, I mean, we're not going to leave a building with a bunch of construction dirt around it, I guess.
You're talking about once the public works is torn down?
Yes, and we build, the contention of building a community-centered, senior-centered building in Phase 2, for example.
Correct.
I guess it seems like some of this is what you would, what the cost would be to deliver a design that's complete versus, you know, in some sense, I am interested in the baseline. If you didn't do any urban planning, the cost for Phase 2 wouldn't be zero.
Correct.
You'd have to do some de minimis landscaping and compliance and whatnot.
But that cost is already in the budget for the buildings already. So there is an assumed landscaping around those buildings, sidewalks close, connecting to the street, things that you would normally find if we weren't talking about the urban planning. That cost of that work is already in the building budget. This is in addition to.
Okay, that's interesting, all right. Okay, so maybe a little less precisely then, what is driving the cost of 2B in the green plan?
In the green plan? So, so in the green plan, let me go back to the phase because that might be what helps. So, so 2B in the green plan is a parking lot. So that is a larger parking lot. So that is a differentiator for the greens' plan than in the commons' plan. That's a building footprint, right? Only part of the, half of the parking lot is included, right?
Some of the buildings are on 2B and the others, so you just have less other space, right?
Correct, exactly.
Of course, no such thing as free parking.
Exactly. But for example, in the commons, right, where it's showing the library right here, the cost of the improvements of that part of the site is in the building cost, and the landscaping around is in the building cost. So the only part of that and this one is the back part of the parking lot, which is not in the building cost.
Where's the pump station sitting right now? Because we have that pump station moved to the middle of that, right there in the parking lot.
Yeah, it's all just.
So Dave, do you want to talk about the pump building, or you want me to talk about the building?
Well, I mean, we're looking at how we're arranging all of these, and that pump station sits in the middle of all of them.
So there is, we've been having.
So when it comes to the pump building, the city has looked at its water system and to upsize the existing pump station to handle our increased demand and our anticipate or expect in future demand. Believe it or not, even though we're not growing, demand is growing. So a recent modeling study showed homes over 2,700 square feet use approximately 25% more water. And so for the city to upsize its pump station in the existing location, that pump station would come offline for probably a year, which then would affect the city's ability to deliver water. So that would require the relocation of that existing pump station. And depending on council selection or feedback, whether that pump station's a standalone building, which it shows here, you can point to it in the corner of Milton and College, or there's some options that show the pump station room attached to one of the buildings, or potentially with some other configurations, we're able to hide that building behind some of the bigger buildings and build off the backside. So exactly where that pump station building will kind of be determined, that's under a design contract that council authorized towards the end of last year. That's being designed separately. And so it's just working in conjunction. There's also some other issues that come into play. Because of the tank locations, there's existing lines underground that provides some issues that we have to work around. It's not insurmountable, we just, you gotta run some new water lines between tanks.
Yep, where is it right now, though? I want them to point it out, right there.
Right now, it's right here.
How much?
In this location.
Excuse me?
How much square footage does it take now where it sits?
So I, I can't tell, but I can tell you the new one, what we're looking for is around 1,500 square feet. And so what we envisioned to try to minimize impact on the existing ground would probably be, and I'm just rounding this, 1,000 square feet on the first floor, then you have the second floor with 500 on it. You can design.
We just don't know what the current size is at all.
I have it, I just don't have it on the top.
This one just kind of sticks out, it's right there away.
So this last two weeks, we've been talking with Carol, your engineer, about where the best location for that is. And we just happened to show it here. She's talking about maybe it wants to be back over here or some other location. So we're working with her to figure out the most cost-effective location for that.
I mean, cost-effective and less obtrusive. You're going to do this big area, and you have a big pump station in the middle of it. Takes a lot of space.
Agreed.
So Jeff, in these three plans, have you given thought to our, to the functionality of the buildings and their parking demands? Or is this sort of a wide assumption that there's roughly an equivalent parking footprint across the three designs?
So there are different number of parking spaces in each design as drawn. I can tell you, these were, you know, not, this is not a final design, so if the goal was to make them all the same, we probably could have done that. But some of the, for example, the Town Square has more parking, because it creates another street with parking off of it. It has an extra 20 spaces more than the other state of Fire Emblem, right? But the, but I think in terms of location of parking to the buildings, then I think that's really, there are some differences between the different ideas that have an impact. Because right now, the majority of the city parking is here, right, which is associated with this building. In any case, you're going to have more parking, city parking, around the community center, library, senior center than you do today, based upon street parking that is being shown here, plus any parking that we get over here. So there would be an increased amount of parking closer to the senior community center and library than currently exists from city parking. Obviously, there's church parking that is associated, and I understand there's shared parking arrangements with the church in the city.
Can we just talk about part one for a minute? One of the goals of getting involved in the urban planning process, and kind of to council member Hart's question about the baseline, if we were to go forward with the community center and the library and the fire station in the way that we have in the plan currently? And we didn't do this, we didn't spend the $21 million on this. What would the pickup and department be for those new buildings?
So if we only did what I'm contracted to work on is in this zone right here. So there would be some potential for some additional street parking on both sides, but it would be minimal, because redoing this parking lot over here is not part of that contract. And obviously, redoing, adding parking on the street is not part of that contract. So there would be minimal, probably it would be close to replicating the amount of parking that you have currently directly associated with the library, community center would be available to do over here. I would, we will have to commit to, we haven't drawn it yet, but I think that's reasonable. Possibly, we could have a little bit more. But it really depends on whether or not, if we put the buildings to the street and then we potentially put parking behind them, you might end up with more parking. You just wouldn't have, you'd be trading parking for green space, green space for parking.
And just to kind of get apples to apples tonight, using all three examples in terms of the average number of parking spaces, you know, I have to talk about each one, but versus the baseline, what, in terms of parking only, what does $21 million get you in terms of more spaces?
In terms of, we're talking about just city parking, correct?
Yes.
Just on cities?
Parking for residents who want to.
Street parking and on.
Baseball games.
Yeah.
In the colored spaces on the map?
So based on what is drawn, which again, I would say that we can improve the numbers from what's drawn today. I think the lowest was around 20 extra additional parking spaces, and the highest was around 48 or so.
Against what we have today?
Against what you have today.
Against the baseline construction plan, right?
Against what is in my current contract for the buildings. There wasn't a design yet, so I can't tell you what we could fit, but if we just assume that, let's just say 10 or 12. that, let's just say 10 or 12.
Yeah, I'm just, I know this isn't all about parking, but if it were, we're talking about a tick, somewhere between 20 and 40 spaces above the baseline construction plan, not...
Correct.
And that is a slight improvement over where we are today. So it's kind of three scenarios, where we are today in terms of parking, the construction baseline that that talked about, and then these three scenarios. And so to go from A, which is where we are today, to the baseline and B is a handful of spaces. And then go from that to one of these scenarios would be an extra 20 to 48 depending on position of buildings, et cetera.
I think that's accurate. And depending on what you end up doing, right, this, how you end up developing this side and whatever you end up doing over here, you can pick up additional parking without doing any of the urban planning, right? In terms of ultimately.
Does that consider the diagonal parking that you discussed in the last meeting as opposed to parallel parking as well? Or would that add potentially even more?
So we are picking up parking count on Milton and Amherst and also on Auden beyond what is there now. I know there's angle parking here now, but there's not, there's parallel parking. So we are picking up in these, all of these plans, we're picking up parking count on Milton and Amherst.
And you're picking them up primarily based on the direction, like the layout of the places themselves?
The layout parking is more efficient than the parallel parking that you currently have.
Can I ask how many people we would be who park to work at the maintenance facility that will be moving out of town center? I mean, I know we're moving in extra parking spaces, but by moving that building, there should be some daily parkers that stay all day. That park there.
There's about 30.
30?
So in terms of the functionality of the green, this is the commons, where...
Can you even add the green? We don't see the picture. This is too small. I have a question. Can you see a picture?
This was green.
So focusing on the green for a second with this sort of flowing space, two buildings sitting, call it horizontally facing each other. In your experience of designing these spaces, what sort of activities or uses would this space lend itself to distinct from the commons, which is, it looks like a similarly sized green space bordered by the covered walk and set opposite with a bit more distance than community center and library? What do you expect in a breach of...
So I will tell you this, we have been talking programming with both the library and with the community center and senior center. There is lots of interest in having some programming space held outside of the building footprint for certain times of the year. I think that that is, I think something both of those programs want to have. And even today, there was a discussion about having, you know, some outdoor exercise areas that would go along with the seniors program. It could happen in those types of spaces. But I think that the activation of the spaces really, I would like to think is going to be more than just the users of these buildings. It would be, in addition, you'd have some community use. It would be, you know, extension of a park space that you currently have potentially, other activities that you might want to have in those kind of public spaces.
If I could, referencing the green space and the potential uses for it, this is certainly a lengthier discussion and, you know, likely more appropriate at a different time. But something I did just want to touch on for council's consideration and community input as well is potential uses for not entirely seniors and not entirely young children, but potentially the more in-between. I received as liaison to the Parks Board this term, I've received a lot of feedback that Westview provides a lot of park space for kids and ample opportunities for adults and seniors, but oftentimes that the teenagers and the ones slightly lower age and just above are often left maybe without a space of their own to consider in Westview. So just a big for thought here.
Agreed. And I just want to remind you that when we presented these ideas, we told you that we're showing this open so you can understand the idea, but the expectation is there'd be lots of shade in all of those spaces because you need it for any kind of perspectives. And the one feedback that we had on this scheme in particular was about the library being across the street on Milton, that that was perceived as a negative. And we've been looking at, you know, re aligning that maybe over here so that it's all on this side of the street to make this, maybe potentially make the scheme different and
I guess I made that similar comment in the prior meeting in June. But I want to go back to why we got into this, and I know we've spent some money in this process, but the idea started with Wesley and we were talking about speed limit and we're talking about pedestrian mobility and making it safer to, you know, transit the community on foot, on a bike, on a scooter. And then it kind of morphed into what we like. We like green space, we want to look for green space where we can. And then it was, well, you know, we want to add parking. So as we've been having these conversations, I keep coming back to what are we getting for $21 million because it's a lot of money? And are we getting what we started out to get? And I think you answered the parking question. It looks cleaner, I think. I mean, I don't know. I don't know if those are real trees or those are the trees we have now.
There's grass there. Talk us a little about...
For sure. This is showing...
...the location part of this.
This is showing a significant more street trees than currently exists. And that's really what was envisioned so that these walkable paths become shaded, walkable paths, and that they would, you know, have a variety of trees off of the city's planting list. And certainly, there is more green space in all of these ideas than you currently have. And I would just say that, you know, we made a choice when we were drawing this about where to draw the line between parking and green space. That line can move. If you say let's deprioritize green space and increase parking more, we could accomplish that in any of these ideas. Or conversely, we could say, you know, let's prioritize green space over some parking town. That would be sort of in the next evolution of design based on feedback that says, hey, what do you do if we wanted to have, you know, X amount of parking? You know, what does that do to the green space, for example?
So then, and the last part of that is kind of, have we, by doing this, if we want to do this, have we created a route or a pedestrian-friendly, you know, mobility solution that didn't exist before?
I think absolutely, because we've created eight-foot wide sidewalks that you don't have anywhere through this area. So that you have, right now, you have sidewalks wide enough that, you know, citizens going in one direction is meeting another in the other direction, there, someone's making a choice to step off or not, or citizens are walking with their child or two child walking down the sidewalk, they're walking like this as opposed to be able to walk in a more walkable street. So all of these sidewalks are now going to be sized to be able to have much more walkable, safer where your child is walking adjacent to you, or you're walking with a stroller, or walking with a dog, or walking with your senior, that all of these sidewalks are much improved over what you currently have.
So I would ask the council, you know, kind of, how do you feel about that? Do you feel like any of these plans, and I don't know if I have a favorite one or not, but do they create a space that people will migrate to and participate in? Or is this, and I'm not picking on it because my kids like it, but the little couple outside the library currently, which I've never seen anybody but my four-year-old sit in, which is a good idea. Friends Park is a good idea, but I don't see a lot of people in Friends Park.
John, that was a legal project that the city couldn't turn down. I think it was fine, but...
Well, we didn't spend $21 million on it, I guess is my point. So if we do something like this, do we succeed? Is this going to become a new draw to the community that they'll participate in, want to park the park, gather in, appreciate? Or are we going too far with the concept for what we're going to get?
Are you asking yourself that?
I said I'm asking the council. I'm asking council. So I'd like council to talk about it. Tell me if you think we succeed here or not.
John? I remember the, but then wherever he's going to get a chance. So if there's some, a way you feel, I mean, we're having an open conversation, but I mean, if you feel it's too much, and I'm starting to get from you that you feel like we're going too far in it. I mean, what I felt, I mean, and kind of what I feel like we're replicating, but in a bigger way, is earlier this summer, I mean, where the guy... You want me to add one or... I, we walk on the pathway and you start toward some right. And it kind of almost has, you know, there's a, like a festival atmosphere around it, even though it's only a five-foot pathway. And you go and you walk down the hallway and you think, and then when you end up walking down toward the shops, you think, this is something that I'd like to see more in Westview, but better. I mean, here we are, a really nice city, but the nicest we get is a pathway that, you know, was a starting point for us to envision what our city could look like. And I think I've read that from some others in the city and on council. And people go there. You see people, a lot of people walking down there and just utilizing the areas of gathering space. And if we could provide more of that, especially when we have a library that people are going to use, we're a library that's, we're a community building where people want to go and not just maybe look in and see if there's something that they're signing up for and coming to go to, maybe. You know, but an area in our city is a gathering place. Having more parking spaces is a bonus. You know, we do need it, and I do like how you've added parking. But I think the wider sidewalks tend to draw people. Throughout the rest of the city, I see people kind of walking in streets, dodging cars. And then we have nice sidewalks there for people. So here, they depart further and walk safely to school, I feel. Today, you go to school for a lot of places and you see, let's say it's a devolve, I don't know, a mile for an hour, kind of driving into a public lane. And you see it here. My kids aren't much too far apart, a little further and walked over, but I think that people will feel safer or feel safer maybe letting their kid out on the other, on college to walk over because there's wider streets and things like that. And just making it a place where people want to go and want to be.
I'll jump in and just say that I do think we have a unique opportunity, if we do it right and if we do it well, that not only this council, but future leaders in the city, future councils and residents can be proud of. I, obviously cost is a factor. I think that the feedback that we've received from residents thus far has been overwhelmingly and resoundingly positive. And so I do think that we're on the right track in terms of the considerations you've put forth here. And I think it is, at this point, becomes a matter of not only doing it, but doing it well.
I echo all of that, and I think when we look at your phasing, and I appreciate your efforts doing it, nothing says we have to get all the four phases done in three years time.
Or 20 years.
Right, exactly. And I think, I think the one that I have come back focused on is 2A, in if we're committing to building, the community building and senior center, which we are, making that, you know, the right degree of phasing or right plan for the future so that we can phase in what we ultimately want this to look at. And if it just ends up being 2.5 million in the first year with further monies to come as we, as we build it and they come, to use the technical phrase, that this can be a demonstration of how things can be in the city. So I don't feel like the need to swallow $21 million, not that I think that's a wildly out of scope cost for the degree of improvements we get per se. But I look at this and say, how do we choose the right design for building this over the next 10, 15 years of sorts over council, beyond us and beyond them? And I think echoing what Susan and Shannon said too, is the subtle things that you can gain here independent of counting that parking spaces and green spaces, if we get this right, is another vector that parents pick up their children from Westview Elementary and relieve traffic on the ice in the university. Another place where teens gather and people finding attraction to Westview even after their children have left the elementary school and are going to schools outside of our boundary. You know, how can we achieve some of those? And I find it very hard myself to choose between one, two, and three. I think I have some queasiness about chopping off the street, but you know, I think we have to be open about that, and I don't see how this is not inextricably linked to that choice and how that choice is inextricably linked to what building design we ultimately choose for the community building and senior center. So whatever resident feedback we gather, whatever your expertise in looking at the effect of these sorts of options on behavior in similar situations is valuable to us. I look at the library and the community center and the green inside them in either the commons or the Westview Green, it's creating significant improvements on the public goods that are available to our community. Today, I think it's fair to say the library and the community center in their current state are public goods that are, either have obvious deficiencies or have significant ways to improve to include their usability. We do not have a central space like the Westview Green in the city center or anywhere near the center of the town today outside of the ball field, which we've got specific uses. And the ball fields get great use. They get great use with our little league programming. They get great use with kids playing on the weekends or whenever they can get out. These spaces, and in particular, I'll mention that in the Westview Green, the way that the space flows and sort of dives northwest into Huffington Park, giving it a kind of seamlessly large area, significant impression of a larger area than the others. I think that's a really wonderful design element that to the extent we can incorporate that into any design, you know, creates real value, create connectivity in Huffington Park as a way to create a much larger connected green space is really an eye sight for them. I think that is something worth investing in as a community. These buildings, like this space, will be places that are appreciated by this generation and the next one and the one after that. And that's $21 million across 5,000 residents, multiple generations, is really wise and sensible to us.
So I guess the question I'm still trying to ask is, if we're going to build a community center and a library, who's going to meet and we want to put them there? Do we accomplish that, Clay? Do we create a space the way you described? And how much more do we need to spend to make the difference if you don't think so?
John, I guess I have a similar question to Susan, which is, I'm not sure what, what is your response? Because I just articulated one. So I think that, I think that this space today, which we can all go and walk out there or look at it on maps, is completely blighted unusable space to a pump. It is capital...
It is capital equipment, it's concrete, and it's part of our neighborhood that represents, you know, what we're trying to get away from the rest of Houston when we spend time in West U.
Right, so the public works building is leaving. We're doing that already. We're building a community center in the plan. We're building a library in the plan. Uh, I mean, we do a lot of this. I guess I'm not opposed to anything on the screen. We're doing a lot of it, though. And maybe this is the best question to ask for Jeff, but I mean, I like Phase Two. I'm not convinced about Phase Four or Five, maybe in sequence later. Um, I'm worried about scope creep and what we started to do and what we've got. And we budgeted $2 million and we're looking at $22 million. I think it's responsible to ask, what are we getting for it? I think we all love pictures. These are beautiful. Uh, the guy sitting in the swing looks great. Um, and for the benefit of the residents here, we're in the middle of something really, really big. Uh, we have, uh, in the next five years, you, if council funds it or votes to fund it this way, will spend $350 million in public debt. We'll sell that debt to fund everything we're talking about. Community buildings, drainage projects, sidewalks, the list. Just to put that in perspective, the tax portion, your tax rate will go up 180%. Your overall total tax rate will go up 60. We have a lot of important projects in there. I'm not gonna debate which ones we should or shouldn't do. I'm not sure we shouldn't do all of them. But we have to think carefully about the money we're spending and how we're spending it and what we get for it. And so I'm not trying to be a party pooper on the beautiful pictures at all. I'm just trying to ask, what are we getting for it? Is it what we set out, when we hired this firm, when we spent a million dollars to look at this, did we get what we asked for? Is it worth putting icing on a pretty good cake that we're building? And by the way, that $350 million includes items like drainage detention. It includes this $21 million. Includes a lot of things that we've been talking about for over four years now, three years in this council and in the fire council. So, uh, I'm working on that. I'm thinking through it. But I think at every step in this, we ought to consider what we're spending, what we're gonna have to sell in debt, what we will encumber multiple generations with in terms of cost and debt and taxes, and decide if we got what we asked for. So, uh, I think we did. I mean, I feel like more parking would be nice for that kind of money. I feel like, um, the West U Green is my favorite picture, whether we can do it or not. I like it because it blocks the giant water tank that's here. And there's another water tank. There's that one and then there's the other. And so, I mean, uh, from a topical view, from the three-dimensional view of the guys in the swings, it looks great. I just wonder, between two giant water tanks, are people gonna say, oh, that's, that's not, they didn't succeed. They spent all that money, and there's a big old tank there, it's not that pretty, and I don't like walking on Milton when it's 100 degrees out anyway. And I don't, I just don't want to have spent that kind of money and end up there. The path that the mayor mentioned was $700,000. I think that was money incredibly well spent. Um, you know, I just hope we're not spending so much money and selling so much debt that we start rounding off in bits of $21 million. By the way, that almost exceeds the budget for the library and the community center as it is. It does, but not by a lot. So I just want to make sure we're thinking about this responsibly. Uh, my goal would be to go forward with 2A in the form of the West U Green, just because I like the idea of blocking the view of that tank in the backside of the church in a way that's valuable to us. And the other designs didn't give me that. I don't mind closing the direction of Milton or Milton entirely, but I think that gives you some flexibility by not closing it off. Uh, the other, I mean, the other three, four phases, I guess I'd be happier if we took our time on it. But if council wants to go and do that now or fund it now, that's fine. I mean, I think they all accomplish things. It just feels like for $21 million, that's all, considering what we get on that though for 700. Kind of wondering where the money's going. Maybe that's a Jeff question. Can you talk a bit more about?
Difference between the sidewalk and what we would be getting?
Because we're gonna build these, and that's right, you're not just gonna leave dirt. You're gonna put grass down. We're gonna get green space outside the buildings if we put them there or not. Um, we're gonna get, you know, sidewalk improvements where we do it up. We won't get new sidewalks by school necessarily. Where does the rest of the money come from and go?
So all of these are total project costs or not just construction costs? So they include the soft costs and includes contingencies, all of that, they're total cost. But to your point, that, so the assumption is there's a lot of new landscaping, there's different improvements for the, for the crosswalks that are enhanced the safety of the crosswalks. There's, uh, in selected areas, there's different potential type of pavement, meaning some pavers versus concrete in selected areas. Um, there's, you know, one of the challenges with any street project, which I know you guys know, is you can't just shut down the streets and do it all at once. So there is a, there's a, do it in bits and pieces so that people aren't impacted by their homes anymore, when they have to be, that tends to rise, cost up if there wasn't anything around it. So there is some cost to any street improvement when you're, you're doing it in pieces as opposed to doing it, you know, wholelessly.
So if I can just jump in a quick, so a few things to clarify, the urban planning portion of the contract that I'm doing, the majority of it is for the design of the new buildings through preliminary design, construction design, design dogs, and construction. We're paying about $50,000 for the urban planning portion. The phased, um, so the purpose tonight, part of it is to find out if there's desire to move forward with those urban planning components, not as a wholesale, but that would affect the direction of the buildings. If the, I'll call it the right-of-way urban planning, the sidewalk in the streets, do not, um, do not affect the construction of the buildings, it would just affect how we would orient the buildings for future use. So areas 2A, B, C, D, that would all be subject to council approval, but it does not have to be built. If we just showed, tried to break down a probable schedule of phasing for it so that we could put some escalation to it to show kind of the difference. If Phase Three and Four wanted to be pushed into the 2030s, they could be. The cost goes up, of course, like everything, but it does not dictate having to do it with the buildings. We just showed a possible schedule for it. And so I, I understand the scope creep aspect, but that will come back to council to make the decision. And the five-year CIP, years two, three, four, are just basically showing the projects that are out there. We have some stuff that council's already identified with some water system improvements and things like that. Some of the other projects may manifest, or they might basically do some additional modeling and study and then sit on the shelf and that debt doesn't come forward. But ultimately, at the end of the day, the council will have the control on what debt is issued and which projects move forward. The reason we got to this point was during council discussion on goal settings, there was a lot of discussion on pedestrian mobility, increasing pedestrian mobility and those types of things. And so when we undertook this project, we're looking at, one is parking, because when the parking starts to push out into the neighborhood or the streets are congested and you have the kids moving around through the cars, that's not the safest thing. So parking and making it more efficient is more, increased pedestrian, wider sidewalks, the enhanced intersections and those types of things. That was all kind of came out of the discussion we had during the goal setting sections, and we looked at it as if it was successful here. There's the potential that down the road, that you could have some more mainline corridors that went out into the neighborhoods to connect it to the city center. Additionally, a lot of the right-of-way, we're currently, tomorrow, actually we're meeting with a grant initiative, um, to look at it, because there are grants available for things like this. So some of it, while we're showing $21 million cost, the $3 million number I had in there as a placeholder was to construct urban planning improvements around the buildings. Um, so that cash is there. So in essence, for Phase Two, with the urban planning portion, the city currently has cash to build the buildings, and I'll call it the improvements, debt issuance, or waiting, or we can find grants.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, the number I referenced, the $350 million is just the debt portion that we're gonna issue. So to Dave's point, there's grant money, there's cash, for lack of a better term, cash on hand. Uh, so we're gonna spend a great deal more than $350 million. Some of it we gave for, like, grants, some of it we use through a general fund that we've established and continue to establish. Uh, and since this is a public meeting, this is why I want to talk about this. I frankly support everything on the screen because I like what we've done. I think my, maybe, maybe the discomfort I'm having is the idea that, you know, while we're doing all this, is just add $22 million to the concept and make it look good. And maybe, maybe we get more for that if we take our time in those later three phases. Now, Jeff's point about 2A, B, C, D, you know, I agree with. I think council ought to come together on which of those directions we want to go in. Uh, but the other phases, I think we gotta be careful about because we're, we're putting that on top of a lot already in the next four years. And all that, by the way, was tax rate increase, not 20 years from now. And that's, that's the end of five years. So, you know, I, I live here, I'm going to enjoy this, but I'm also gonna pay for this just like you are. So, you know, I just want to make sure we get everything we're seeking to get for this kind of money, and it's worth it. And we're not trying to kill anyone's parade on making it look beautiful or for the future generations. Uh, but I feel like this year in particular, we've been at some really, really expensive meetings. And I've been in council meetings that have gone on for an hour because we're arguing about $100,000. Now we're moving to $22, $23 million clips. So this meeting, council meetings, this is the opportunity to talk about it. Residents ought to know that they're paying for that and come back and tell us what they think about it. And I hope that we go forward this maybe in a manner that doesn't, that doesn't clog an expensive kind of debt barrier already, uh, right now. So maybe over seven years, eight years with Phase A doing it. But as important to me is picking the right one, two, or three. It's, it's how we phase this over maybe a longer period of time as much as we're trying to.
You can kind of leave it all out there, like a facility technical plan, you hold binder, and then when the time comes that you feel you can afford it, you flip to that page and say, you know, we had these plans, we put them out there. I know in 2015 or 14, we had a facilities master plan that was based on how, what was owned at the time. And it, and it was well done, because I know when it came time for us to do something to the police station, we already had the, you know, the plans out there. And we could do it, even though those had been put in a plan many years earlier. And I think for us not to have the city out there ready for when the city is, or residents are ready for something like that, or another phase to it, you have it in your pocket. This doesn't mean go do it, but I think that's, um, good, good city planning is having it ready and out there. And I know we lost our master plan in maybe 17 and had to kind of start from scratch, so it looks like a lot all at once, but it's rebuilding what we have, based on what we have out there now.
Jeff? Apologies to the mic, but I generally project, so could you particularly, coming back, let's say we chose West U Green.
So, please.
Hypothetically, let's say we chose West U Green. Could you articulate, and maybe Dave, it's a mixed question for you, 2A, which seemed to be the essential part of, we're building buildings and we don't want to leave like a, you know, a dirt river in between. What is, what is in budget now and what is the incremental we get from 2A, so to speak?
So, so in the current building budget, right, is really areas that would be, you know, small areas around a building footprint. So let's just say that we could put the buildings in this much of that site. And that's what the development would include, whatever we could park in that area, and then whatever's left over would be held out for another budget, whether you be sodding or whether, you know, you come back and do parking or something like that. So I think, to me, the idea about whether or not the city's interested in a space that these buildings engage with as opposed to engaging with the street. For example, like a lot of the buildings around here do now, the front door is to the street, they address the street, there's nothing wrong with that. That's just a different approach. But as opposed to having an opportunity to create, it's really creating, it's creating the park space, it's creating the lighting that would go with that, it's creating the drainage that goes with that, it's creating the, the buildings are separate budget, and that's already, that's not accounted for in any of this. Uh, and the, you know, the utilities to serve those buildings is in another budget. The localized landscaping is in another budget. Uh, we're really talking about the area that connects all of that. That would be either, you know, one way could be the space behind it, or potentially along the side of it, or in this case, maybe it's between them and then the buildings get designed so that they engage that space as opposed to turn it back on.
So even with, even with this, we never say, okay, we're doing the sodding and the terror forming, so to speak, for 2A, but the lighting comes next year or something?
For sure, for sure. You could put the confluence in, right? Things in the future, absolutely.
Right. I mean, I, again, coming back to the point I said earlier, I think this is, the work that's already been done is enormously helpful for illustrating how we could do this over time. And ultimately, we have to redo streets, we have to redo audit and college. Right? Drainage comes up, we're putting in the water system, tearing up, undoubtedly it'll tear up something. And whenever we put it down, we have a plan or benchmark against which to go for. So these phasings come in in ways that are both longer or shorter, you know, more variable than what you've shown, and it's still within a consistency of the ultimate product, I think.
And it's also gonna inform where the pump room goes, right? Because you don't have a pump room just to go to the most efficient spot of pumping to be in, it's right in the middle of everything. That's, this, an idea like this should inform all of that, so it becomes part of a holistic idea.
And so to the extent we're looking for feedback from me and what I would say is that I, I think it's incumbent on us to consider some of these further points and ultimately design the buildings to fit in one of these concepts, because inevitably, we want the new building and ultimately, I think we like the look of the concept. And how we get from A to B and when those monies are spent to get from A to B, it, you know, we don't want to leave something incomplete and unusable. But at the same time, it feels like you also helpfully delivered us an incremental, step-by-step approach, one could take together.
Absolutely. I mean, I chose these years, these could have been any year. This could have been 2050, 2040. We're never.
Yeah, I think also with, with respect to Phase Two specifically, I think, you know, a lot of residents may feel that if you were able to kind of break, break the overall picture here up, you know, if we proceeded with Phase Two specifically, you know, the 2A through the 2D, at that point, you could assess community reaction, the usage, and kind of see how, how residents respond, whether it gets the usage and, and you know, positive feedback that, that ultimately is what we're going here, going for here, and then proceed, you know, as, as needed with the additional phases at that point.
I mean, I showed 2D as part of Phase Two, but this could have been part of Phase Five too, right? So it could have stopped at the intersection and not engaged College Street. So again, I made a lot of assumptions about, of trying to give you some ideas about what is possible, so you can have this exact conversation.
And in some sense, for me, 2D is better, Phase Two has been replaced with 3C, because then at least you get the connection to the school and the fields of sorts. Or 4B as it is, but 3C seems logical, right? You know, but the idea of that extending the central part of West U to that, but that's not a critique of your plan, right? You didn't know how we were thinking of all the modifications, but ultimately, achieving the usage, this sort of linearity between the ball fields, the school, Huffington Park, the city hall, and you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, see, Matt, I'll just jump in on that and say, to that one, there. Well, see Matt, I'll just jump in on that and say, to that, there, to that point, I, I see 3C, 3B, and 4B all as kind of part of the Westview Elementary traffic zone, if that's what, you know, if that's the picture you're looking at. Because those three streets in particular are mornings and afternoons, you know, that's, that is elementary school traffic in Westview.
And I don't know the right answer, but maybe the answer is you build the wide sidewalk first, and the angled parking comes next, you know?
Was that, I was looking at it backwards, sorry. Maybe 4B, 4A, and 5C. I'm looking around. I'm thinking the route around Westview Elementary.
I, I do understand the logic of, I do understand the logic of the streets flowing into the ball field area. But I, I also wonder whether 3C and 4B are being fit into the structures and walls of the city and the neighborhood, and that's sort of floated into their construction based on all functions.
Are there economies of scale on some of these? If you build, put a couple of them together, does it matter?
There's always economy of scale, generally speaking, the more you tend to get better pricings for that.
Sorry, yeah, I was referring to 4B, 4A, and 5C as the Westview Elementary traffic.
So, so in essence, I get that some are looking at more the connection between this area and the school and the ball fields. So I guess one of the questions we need to know, because all of the stuff, all of the improvements outside of 2A can happen at a different time. But if there's a desire to move forward with some type of improvements to the right-of-way, everything outside of 2A, that would dictate how we would position the buildings on the site. And in essence, the only thing that realistically, right now, Phase 2 is under design. So we are moving forward with that, unless council says, no, we're, we're stopping. What we would like tonight is there a desire for these other additional elements, because they will dictate how we, how we position the buildings and then the future growth. There's some discussions, so master plan and how we got here, 2006, the city started under a master plan. Thirty-six variations of options and no plan. And so the city went another eight years before it talked about it again. The problem is, there was opportunities in those eight years for the city to acquire land that could have aided in our use, the community's use of the civic center. But because we didn't have a long-range plan, to go and justify to the taxpayers the spending of money for a house that sits there unused or it's being rented out, it's, it's a little difficult. So the 2014 was an attempt at that. The facilities master plan is approved prior to the city coming back. The facilities in here that were replacing were built in the 1950s, the public works that's going over here. The city was going to have to invest a lot of money into these facilities, and the goal, the direction act was to make sure that the, the facilities were in their long-term position before the city invested money in them. And what kind of morphed out of that, that review was getting the, the maintenance side of public works outside of the city and letting Houston enjoy that work. And returning this space to the community. A square foot of dirt in the community center, as we all know, is very valuable. So the whole purpose of this master plan is for the city to have a long-term plan. How we execute it is up to the city council. But we would, we would, we need to know if there is a desire to incorporate these right-of-way improvements, because that will affect the positioning of the buildings. At the end of the day, the buildings can be built, as Jeff said, we can come in, the 3A, we can do some of the basic stuffs, grass it over, and at a later time, come back and add to the improvements. But if we know those improvements are coming, then we would run conduit, we would run the underground systems to support that future use, so we don't tear it up. I'll give you a prime example. Universities improvements on the east side, had the city had a long-term plan for drainage improvements, we are now, we tore up a street along University that was put in 25 years ago, half of its lifespan, because the long-range planning was not there. But how you execute it is up to council, we just need to have that direction.
I guess I'm trying to understand your question, because I think we all just sort of indicated these make sense to us, we, we have support for the idea, and we'd like to have the flexibility to counsel understand the incumbents of this financially on the city as we go through it. And then, if we looked at you and you said, okay, so do you support it, but by the way, I need to start running conduit, and I need to start planning for spaces, so why don't you really ask me, Derek? Are you asking me whether or not we support the immediate, you know, base work, and what does that cost? Can you tell me what you just said in terms of what that would cost to put conduit and plan for all these phases ultimately?
That would come out of the design. So if there is a desire to move forward with some parts of these elements, then we will continue down this path. So I've heard that there are people supportive of it, and then I've heard there's for it, and then I'm concerned. And so honestly, I was slightly, I wasn't sure, so I asked for the question. So we're good at moving forward, then I'll let Jeff take over and ask about the elements. I've heard stuff from connectivity to the school looking as a higher priority, the wider sidewalks. So if all of those elements are of a desire, Jeff, then what more direction do you need?
Well, I mean, I think the most important thing to keep the buildings is, is the idea that, that creating some kind of a central space that the buildings should engage with is, that's, was the biggest priority. In terms of how we treat the, the street edges, there's more time for that. Obviously, what, what we did in, in these ideas is we reduced the width of the street to create the parking spaces, so in some cases, we shifted where the curbs are in order to accomplish the angle parking and other things. So we certainly wouldn't want to do that in a portion without knowing that you're going to do it in a portion at some point. And if it's just 2A, there's really, based on this idea, this drawn-up here, we're really not focusing on that, because we're not doing any of that in the 2A zone other than this drop-off potentially. We know we need a drop-off. So I think that we're not really committing to, you know, the angle parking, we're not committing to shifting the street edges if 2A is, is the boundaries of what you're comfortable with tonight. If you said, hey, we wanted to think about, you know, these connectors together, then we would start to look at, while we're looking at where the sidewalk is, we'd want to align it with where a future sidewalk would be in the future, whenever 3C or 2B comes along. If that makes sense.
Jeff, I guess putting a point on it, in the next step of your work, we leave here this evening, will you be designing buildings that give images for both the Westview Green and the Commons and the Town Center? Or would you want direction at this point? Like what's the most effective path?
Well, I think that the idea that, that the green space is something that is, that the city's desires to investigate gives me an idea of how to go work up ideas for these buildings. So when we bring back the preliminary design, we may show you a couple of different ideas about how the buildings would work that might look similar to the green, it might look similar to the other ones. But now we're going to have the reality of the buildings, the shapes, the sizes, the doors, that'll help, you know, give better information about what ultimately the right solution is. And that would be in October. We'd be bringing that back in October with some different ideas, with the buildings utilizing a, a green space that oriented the buildings more towards the center. And so that's, that's what helps me out.
So, but that still gives us flexibility on the concept of like a community center. If residents said, hey, what we really want is the ball space, and we want you to build, you know, half a community center, half a football court. If so, okay, are we going to be able to flex that building concept? Does that just mean we have to start going higher and more expensive to do that?
That is what we're doing right this moment, is we're looking at studies about one building, two buildings, three buildings, one-story, two-story, based on the size of spaces that came out of the programming exercises that we had here and with the, with the city's user groups. So that is the exercise we're going through right now. Some of those work better with this scheme versus that scheme versus that scheme. So we're, we're going to be presenting those different ideas to try to figure out what's the right answer.
2A can flex down, or up, right, 2A can be, can really get up and down based on the ultimate design of the building.
Correct, correct.
We're not tied to that just because we want to move forward with this.
Correct.
Just, just one question to, to piggyback on that line, and then I think the rest of us will have to speak. But do, do any of these designs, particularly between the Green and Commons, lend themselves to a particular style of architecture in your mind today? It's such that you're saying you really like the flowing space, the green. Would your impulse or intuition be, will that lend itself to something in particular that is distinct from the Commons?
Well, I would say this, none of the buildings are going to look like this. They're not going to be those kind of shapes, because that's not cost-effective, that's not what the budget was built upon. That doesn't mean the green space can't flow like that into those edges. I think this idea was based about a more organic type of approach to architecture, where this idea was designed around a more formal approach to the architecture. That doesn't mean it can't be the same, it could be different materials in both ones. But again, this is a little more, when we did these three schemes, we wanted to show you three completely different ideas to see what kind of reaction it was. We, we don't know what the building design's going to be yet, and that's still to come. So even if we did this idea and the buildings, we wanted this to be more organic, we could do that, we're just not there yet.
My feedback is I prefer the Westview Green concept. I will reiterate what I said in the last meeting, that I'm not a fan of either the library or the senior, the community building, senior center. I'm not, I don't like that across the street. I think early, early on in these discussions, it was, one of the, one of the talking points was making the community building and library more accessible to residents and seniors in particular. So that, you know, to me, the idea of crossing a street to get from one to the other defeats the purpose of that. So I prefer the Westview Green. I'm in favor of the Phase 2 moving forward at this point with the eye towards doing what we can to, to lay the foundation and the groundwork for future phases.
Can we hear the rest?
Yeah, just, my name is Dennis, and thank you for being able to talk so quickly. I was just trying to walk back home, and I walked into those two water tanks. On a map, it looks like it's a giant space. Literally, you can place it within, I don't know, 70 phases or so, maybe 80, it's a pretty small, a small space. Last time when we met, we were, it was a pirate impression that this water tank, which is between 2A and 2D, may go away. My understanding is probably a costly move, but again, for you guys, it's pretty hard to choose. You have 8 million, or 8 million, or 8 million. Maybe it would be worthwhile to get, you know, more expensive option with this one not going away, and significantly less expensive option, John, to your point. Okay, so you guys can, can pick between, you know, 10, 8, and 5, okay? But we, I would really would like to see an option with this water tank in 2A and 2D, which is not, because there's not really any fault between 2A and Huffington Park, because of this water tank effect.
I guess I really appreciate that feedback, because that's kind of what I'm trying to understand here, is do we succeed, you know? If, if we spend this, and someone walks up and says, what are you doing with a water tank in the middle of your park? Or someone says, what, that's not a particularly attractive view with the back of that church building that your park's next to. Do, do, do people say, what was that government thinking when they spent that money? Which people say a lot about government spending. So I feel like that's my job here, you and the council's job, is to say, this is a really good idea, Jeff? Or the picture is a little deceiving, right? That's what I'm trying to dig out here tonight. Did we succeed what we asked you to do? Or are we going to say, man, I wish we'd spent that money on drainage, you know? Because drainage is getting expensive and it's not done. So that's what I'm driving at. And I guess, I don't, I appreciate that feedback, because I don't have the answer to that. Totally leaving here tonight. I feel like it's the right idea, it looks pretty, I, I'm encouraged by the flexibility of phasing, it could mitigate some of the cost impact. But some of it feels like maybe, you know, we're not there yet. And I'm not saying go back and study it all over again, but I just got a very point, what are you going to do with the tank? Are you going to bury it, try and walk over it, or across the street? And there's a parking problem. You know, I mean, have we thought through all of this in a way that the council should have given you correction tonight or not? I understand. I, I would say that, you know, I know the city has some decisions to make about whether how they rebuild and when they rebuild that tank and potentially where, but that's outside of...
Oh, that's it, okay. So the water tank will be replaced more likely in the next five to 10 years, give or take. So at the time when that tank's replaced, and the city will have an option on what to do. We can move it earlier, or when the tank comes time for replacement, having a plan that shows what you want, then that tank relocates to a different location, and that space gets repurposed for the benefit of the overall plan. But that's what the plan can show. So those will be some additional discussions that come down. I, I guess, so I get it with the tank, you look at it, but it's the future. It's all about phasing and what, and what the appetite of the community and council is for the phasing.
Very much for it, but I just want to thank your benefit for this option.
No, I mean, if we can't do the water tank, just do the green result, I mean, with the water, but I just think that would be nice eventually to have this in plan to come around.
We have a separate water plant permanent.
Yes, it's like separate.
I mean, I, I don't, because I don't envision taking facilities like a water tank that work right now and tearing them down for another reason when they've got 50 years of life.
Okay, months.
But if, when it's time, and they're not working anymore, and you can't clean them out, then look at burying or moving. But, you know, talk about adding obscene costs, moving water towers or functional breakouts.
So it's basically like, we'll leave that plan?
We have, there's plans, separate water set of plans.
And Dave, remind me, is it necessary that it remains fenced off? Or could we at least have a pathway around the tank or sorts of? So there are some security requirements, so the entrances and stuff like that would have to be, for lack of a better term, fenced off. But there's creative ways to do that. I'm not sure, I'd have to be back with you. Those are the design elements, and there is always a creative way to accomplish the security that's required by homeland security when it comes to those types of facilities.
And I think that we would have to design, whatever we're doing here, that that tank is going to stay, or that it goes away, and the design needs to work both ways.
Right, understood.
There's also chatter of...
We have one other person have a question?
I'd like to raise a question about parking. A lot of your orientations, Jeff, with whether, out this direction for building the phasing is considering parking. This building, the City Hall building, basically, from a design perspective, faces the street.
Correct.
But everybody comes in through the parking. The major deficiency that currently, this building and the library is their lack of parking around it. And none of the things I've seen you talk about, none of them, but few of them actually focus on where people are going to park to enter the building. And it's not going to be, they aren't going to want to park down the block, they want to park near the building. And you don't want the parking space split in two different streets, because you want to drive into one, and that's the parking for the building. You don't want to drive into one and then have to drive around the other side of the building to park. So I'd like to have some discussion about the parking for any of the plans you've got that are servicing the building.
For sure. We don't, I can't tell you right now, we don't know where the front door for any of these buildings are going to be at either. So that, that's all part of the, the equation, is understanding... So that's all part of the equation, is understanding where does people enter the space? Where do people from the street, from walking, from parking, from, if there's green space, how do they get into the space? So that's all part of what has to happen in the design process to make it all work. And we understand that is, that is something we have to solve.
My question to everybody, we can look at it and say, "I don't like it." Strip out 5A if you don't like it, but my thought is, we have a whole, again, as Dave explained earlier, I try to inartfully have a master plan out there so that when we're looking at 2A, 2B, and 2C, and 2D, that we have it situated in such a manner that if we want to carry out these elements, that it fits into that plan. I mean, we could just plot buildings now or ever, but I think without a, a plan to do it correctly and how people want it in the future, coming back and trying to retrofit is often harder. I mean, I think just having the plan out there is comforting for the, any council, plus the residents. So my suggestion would be move ahead with the 2s and leave 3, 4, and 5 for future votes unless, you know, it can come to council at any time or budget. Someone saying, you know, 3D, I think is important because people are running across the street. You know, after 2A is built and we think it's dangerous or, you know, some piece of land became available, not that I know of any, and we think 3C is really important now to build. And then we have, you know, plans in place for that type of thing.
I like that idea, Dave. Does that, I guess I still see the light between what she just said and what you asked for. Does that get you there? Or do you think you need go-no-go on each phase here? I guess I'm not sure which one you're asking for. No, I, so the goal to, the goal to this one, you have to be right on. The goal is really just to make sure everyone was okay with moving forward to look at these concepts. And then we'll come back as what you planned, but I'll defer to Jeff on, you got enough?
Yeah, I think based upon their, their interest in creating a bigger plan that incorporates, you know, B, C, and D, I get that. I understand. I can work with that. And 2A gives me what I need to start designing buildings as well.
Yeah, so we can lay out the buildings with, with the expectation that at some point, time or later, there would be improvements coming from the street side. And those will be discussions to talk to council. Once the buildings are laid out, really the, these demarcations, the delineation on the phases, they might change because of the way the buildings are shaped. And so we'll come back with the phased approach to get council's feedback on, I'll call it the right-of-way improvements, the phasing.
There's also the flexibility that, let's go figure out how this really works and get it designed so we know it works. But you say that I don't, that's great, but I don't want to build that right now. I want to build this part, and we'll come back and build that part in the year, future if you're interested.
I think if you're doing it in a phased approach, we can also see, maybe 4B would be better done a little bit differently. Things like that. I mean, so, I mean, I know we don't have to vote on this tonight, but, I mean, do I have agreement on this description I just gave? Yes, yes?
Definitely.
Yes, yes, you're right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.